Call this meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Two in a row. Good morning. This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 12, 2017. This is our last meeting of the year so far. With that, we would like to move right into the consent agenda. Before I start, though, Commissioner Blaney is absent today. She has a sick child at home with the stomach flu, and she's being a mom today. So, good for her. So, we're going to try to get through this without her. So, if it gets a little rough, you'll know why, because she's not here. So, with that, we'll move right into consent agenda. We have approval minutes for November 14th.
Motion to approve.
We're going to do the whole thing, the whole consent.
Oh, go ahead and read it.
Yeah. Approval of payroll, November 17th, December 1st. Approval of claims, November 16th, November 22nd, November 30th, and December 7th. Waits and Measures Monthly Report is on file October 16th through November 15th. And we're accepting applications for the following board appointments for 2018. That's Alcohol Beverage Commission, Board of Health, BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals, Porter County Convention and Recreation Visitors Commission, Plan Commission, Parks and Recreation Board, Peta Bora, Redevelopment Commission, West Porter Township Fire District, and Wildlife Management Advisory Board. We also have contracts that we put under consent agenda for the Memorial Opera House. We have Tom Byerly Artistic Service Agreement, Chris Stalbaum Artistic Service Agreement, Kirk Gillum's Artistic Service Agreement, Ashley Happer Artistic Service Agreement, Becky Von Guard Artistic Service Agreement, Stephanie Reader Artistic Service Agreement, Connor Gregg Artistic Service Agreement, Jennifer Nelson Artistic Service Agreement, and then we have Patent for Judge Committee. That's a venue rental agreement, and that's for a non-for-profit. So, with that, I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, moving into new business. Commissioners, we have an amendment to a rainy day fund. As you recall, at the last meeting, we did the first public meeting and the first reading. This is an amendment to the rainy day fund second reading. I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve the second reading.
We have a motion to approve the second reading and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of, let's see here, approval of the Gareup Construction Payment Application Number Two for the admin building plaza. As you can see, they're moving along out there. Pretty good clip.
Motion to approve the Gareup Construction Payment Application Number Two for the construction of the administration building plaza.
And what is that amount, Scott?
It's sideways.
Two hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Two hundred and forty-eight. Thanks, man. Two hundred and forty-eight thousand and fifty cents.
It's two. Two eight four, four twenty, and fifty cents.
There you go. I'll open the floor.
Uh.
You had to give a motion, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. We just had a dollar amount in there. That's all. I'll second it. So, we have a motion and a second for the approval of Gareup Construction Change Order Number Three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Let's not screw all this stuff. We'll never hear the end of it from Commissioner.
I know. That's what I was sitting here thinking.
That was to approve the pay application number two for Gareup. Next is the change order number three for Gareup.
Yeah, that says, it says Larson-Danielson, but that's wrong, because I caught that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, over the Gareup Construction Change Order Number Three for the renovation of the administration building plaza.
Right.
And this is designed for the animal shelter.
Yeah.
This one is actually real.
Yeah, okay. Jim said it. So, that change order amount, five thousand ninety-nine dollars. And that's for some additional electrical plugs.
Was the equipment had a different voltage than what was available, so we had to make changes to the other.
Yeah, he had to put some starter motors on it, some other things I read through there. So, okay. So, we have a change order number three for the renovation of the admin building in the amount of five thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll move to number four, the approval of Larson-Danielson Change Order Number Three for the animal shelter.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of Change Order Number Three for the animal shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have the approval of Larson-Danielson's final payment in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents for the animal shelter. So, we're closing out the project here at the end of the year.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final payment in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, seven twenty-two, seventy-one to Larson-Danielson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would like to make a comment and thank Larson-Danielson for a fantastic job that they did on our project. It was, it was, it was great working with them. They're a great organization. We're seeing the same thing here with Gareup on the front plaza here. So, let's keep our contractors moving in the right direction, and we're very, we're very happy with what we've received on this project. So, thank you. We have, number six, we're moving now into request for approval by Jerome Sikora to continue renting 24 acres of county property located at 400 North, the Norfolk Southern Railroad Eastment, which is on the north, the Grand Trump Eastment, which is on the south, and 210 West, which is on the west, at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars an acre for farming purposes.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second for a request for approval for Jerome Sikora to continue renting 20 acres, 24 acres of county property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have another request for approval by Tim Stoner to continue renting seven acres of county property located at State Road Two at the rate of a hundred and forty-five dollars an acre for farming purposes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for a request for approval for Tim Stoner to continue renting seven acres of county property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, on the docket, we have approval of county vehicles taken home by employees.
This is just an amendment to our standing resolution to include Lance Bella and Robert Langworth.
Langworth.
And Mr. Brickner on their take-home vehicles. So, we are, lists are continuing. So, we have an active amended list at all times of the take-home vehicles.
Yep.
Lance is the director, as everybody knows, the new director of EMA, and Rob is the director of 911.
And those vehicles were approved at our last meeting, and now we're coming back and approving them and putting them on our county take-home vehicle because they are an emergency responder. So, all those in favor, I'll, I'll open the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the county vehicles' take-home policy by those employees just mentioned.
Oh, second. So, we have an approval of county vehicles taken home by employee per the attached attachment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution for 2018 Commissioners' Meeting Schedule. That schedule is, will be published. Do I need to go through the dates, you think? Again, it's pretty much what we're doing that we did last year. We're meeting about every three weeks versus every two weeks. And if there comes time to time, we need to call special meeting. We'll do that. I think we called special meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we called three special meetings last year, just to take care of business that, from a timeframe standpoint. The first meeting, though, I will give you the first meeting for 2018, which will be January 16th, again at 10 o'clock here in these chambers. So, with that, I'll open up the floor for approval of the resolution for our meeting dates for next year.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution for the 2018 Commissioners' Meeting Schedule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We also have, next is the approval of the 2018 Holiday Schedule. I'll go ahead and, I'll say those. We have Monday, January 1st, New Year's Day; Monday, January 15th, Martin Luther King Junior Day; March 30th, Good Friday; March 28th, Memorial Day; July 4th, Fourth of July; September 3rd, Labor Days; November 12th, Veterans Day; November 22nd, Thanksgiving Day; November 23rd, Thanksgiving; December 24th, Christmas Eve; and December 25th, Christmas Day. I'll open the floor. I'll make a motion.
Second. Yeah, a second with discussion, Mr. Chairman.
We, okay, we have discussion.
I just wanted to point out that we, we did not, there is no changes, other than a day where Christmas fell.
Right.
Everything stays the same as it was this year.
Good, good, Jim. We have, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we move to approval of longevity.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a, I'll second it, and a second for longevity for the second half of 2017. Scott?
Yeah, this is a follow-up. The council had, what the auditor had worked through, getting our longevity pay sorted out into a much more formal policy on approval and which employees and how you qualify and how you don't qualify. We've had a lot of confusion over the last couple of years, and this will clear it up. And I just want to thank Vicki, the council, Mr. Harper, the council attorney, worked very hard to get this done, and I think this will take care of all the issues moving forward and let all the employees know exactly how it works, when it works, how they qualify, when they don't qualify moving forward. So, hopefully, this takes a lot of the pressure that the auditor's office was feeling around the longevity issue.
Thank you, Vicki.
And I believe the council has passed this at their meeting. So, this would follow up, and this would be something that's kind of sitting outside of our, this is, this is the supplement to what our current policy book has.
Thank you, Scott. Any other additional questions, Jim?
No.
On that, on that regard, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, approval of longevity is approved. Now, we're going to move to GIS. That's General Insurance Services from Valparaiso, Indiana. Mark Berent and Charlie Keen. This is a renewal summary and strategy that they're going to give us. As you recall, the last meeting, we are moving our property and casualty insurance to a new service provider here in, in Porter County after years of Anton Insurance up here. And with that, we would like to welcome you gentlemen to our meeting, and I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mark Berent.
And I'm Charlie Keen.
And we just want to say thank you. We appreciate being selected for your property and casualty insurance broker. We really look forward to working with you in the future with goal of improving coverages, risk management efforts, and hopefully provide resources and services that add value to your insurance purchasing decisions. Current results we've put together for this year, we're pleased to inform you that your renewal premiums will be going down by at least 6%. Reduction really is a result of improved negotiations with the insurance carriers, and we also had to market the auto coverage because auto owners non-renewed it. And we were actually able to provide some savings by marketing that. Charlie here will go through some of the details of the program, terms and limits.
Thanks again to, to echo Mark's sentiments. Thanks again for allowing us to become your broker. I would like to preface everything that we put together here with the short timetable that we had to work with. I think slightly less than 30 days. So, you know, this is going to be a continued work in progress as we, as we could become more familiar with the county, build our file, understand how the county government works. We do have past experience with other municipalities and public entities, so it's not unique in nature for us. So, I'm, I'm just going to jump in and keep this pretty high level this morning. Obviously, I welcome any questions as we walk through this. I'll keep it as brief as possible. The program that we've secured with the county, for the county, for the renewal, everything renews effective 1-1, with the exception of the workers' compensation coverage, which comes due in April. So, we have, we went out to marketplace, not to every market because we had limited information, but we basically approached the carriers that you guys are already dealing with. And so, we are making the recommendation to renew with the current carriers with, with a couple of exceptions that I'll make note of. The first being the umbrella coverage. Currently, the excess coverage covers all, overall underlying coverages, with the exception of the abuse and molestation coverage. This is a specific exclusion in the umbrella. So, it is our recommendation that we go a slightly different route and increase the primary limits to five million versus, versus the, doing a primary limit of two million and an excess of four. So, in essence, you would have five million dollars per recurrence and 10 million dollars in the aggregate. And this allows us to pick up that additional abuse and molestation coverage. The other significant change, as Mark alluded to, auto owners non-renew the county's auto insurance. So, we are recommending that we place the auto with Bliss McKnight or the Government Insurance Exchange Insurance Company for placement in the auto, and there is significant savings in doing so. We did receive other quotes that were significantly higher. So, to jump right into the, oh, excuse me, before we jump into the premiums, I just wanted to point out also that we're proposing that we close a significant coverage gap by purchasing cyber coverage, which is an option. I believe that everybody's aware of the, the issues in our society with cyber, cyber breaches. It is a significant gap, we believe, in the county's insurance program, and we're recommending making the change. So, I don't know how detailed you want me to get on this, this premium summary. However, I'll just, I'll present the totals, and if you want to go into the, the by-line item, we can do so. So, expiring coverage that will expire 1-1, current premium excluding the workers' compensation is 1,191,623 dollars. We're proposing the renewal at 1,115, 1,115,300 dollars. Overall savings, 76,000. That includes going, changing from, doing away with the umbrella and going to higher primary limits and therefore picking up the abuse and molestation coverage. If you want to continue down the same path and stay with the umbrella, it'll save an additional 20,000 dollars. Of course, you won't, you won't have that abuse and molestation coverage above 2 million dollars.
And does that also include cybersecurity?
No. So, the cybersecurity would add an additional 16,205 dollars to the premium. So, if you, basically, if you add the cyber and go with our recommendation, the overall savings to the county at this point in time is slightly over 60,000 dollars.
Recommendation being to reinvest some of the savings and close the coverage gap at the same time.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I think that's, that's the way to go. And also remember, for historical purposes, the county is also, by, by moving to our new service provider, the county has moved away from commission-based.
Correct.
Property and casualty insurance, we've always paid based off a commission. We'd never get to see what the commission was because of how the insurance world works. Today, though, we are now going to a fixed fee, and that's one of the ways that these gentlemen won, won the award and were awarded the, the business. And we feel because of where we thought some of the commissions possibly were versus the 50,000 dollar fixed fee, we also think there's some additional savings there that the county garnered from, from moving the model, from a commission base to a fixed base. So, we think there's some additional dollars there, too, that we saved anywhere from probably 50 to 100, I would think in that regards. Maybe I'm a little high. I don't know. But without knowing, we do know it's 50,000 is much less than what it probably was prior. So, so coupled with that, we have some additional savings here. I would also, but go ahead. I've finished up there.
Commissioner, good. I appreciate you pointing that out. That, that total was included in the totals that I just went over.
Oh, so that was included in there.
Yeah. So, the last line item.
Forget that.
Yeah. Includes our fee, includes our fee in there.
In the, okay.
So, I would like to point out that I believe going to a fee-based model improves, because really, there's no incentive, the only incentive for us is to do a good job for the county. We have no incentive to place coverage with a certain carrier for any certain premium dollar amounts. We, this really frees us up to go to the marketplace on, on the commission's behalf. So, Commissioner, good. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah.
So, so having said that, there's still significant savings, even with our fee built into there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
It's hard to, thank you. It's hard to quantify because we don't know what the, what the previous broker was making in commission, which, so it's hard to.
That in itself says a lot.
Okay.
Leave it there. Leave it at that.
So, if there aren't any other questions, I just, again, like to reiterate, you know, appreciate the opportunity. As working with, I see the consultant involved with finding us, working with the, also, I believe we're going to be establishing a safety committee, and we look forward to digging into that as well.
Yeah, I think the first meeting's coming up on that. And for, for notification to public, workman's comp and auto insurance is where the county has a lot of work to do with regards to getting our rates under control. And in the past, we really not had a very, we've had a very passive type of approach to managing these two areas. And I think with the help of GIS, we, we're now going to approach that and attack that.
Yeah.
A little more aggressively so we can start moving those coefficients and those factors down to where the county will have more savings. We've so far gotten bought, bought in, buy-in from the Sheriff's Department, Highway Department, Parks and Recreation is going to be on that board. There's a representative from the council on that board. A represent from the commissioner's office will be on that board. So, we have a lot of work to do here going forward, and hopefully, we can keep the pressure on and start, start making our historic, history and our claims look a little bit better. So.
Yeah, the first step in the process is always recognizing.
Yep.
That there's improvement to be made. So, we appreciate that.
Well, it's well over 25 years ago, the last time the commissioners have brought in a new servicing agent. So, you're, you're getting, you know, this is quite the opportunity. And so far, it looks like we, we certainly made the right decision. I look forward to working with you as the other two do as well. Just remember, it's, it was well over 25 years ago, the last time we made a change. So, if, but, you know, I, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I believe that this board is going to expect a lot. The, for me, as I think Jeff, Jeff touched on it, your brokerage fee being a flat fee, there was no other hidden cost in here. No, you weren't being compensated on the back end by somebody you were bringing in the door here to make a change to us, for us. And, you know, I appreciate that. That's really what we were, we were striving for from the very beginning, that we knew upfront what these costs were going to be. And I, and already, we're just, and I also agree with Jeff, because we've gone to a flat fee with you, and we did not know what the previous service agent was receiving, I can almost guarantee you that though, that it was exceeded 50,000 dollars a year. So, thank you. And your local firm, which you can't beat that either. So.
Commissioner Biggs, we appreciate the, the comments. I would like to say, on behalf of, of the entire General Insurance Services Organization, that part of our mission is to secure the futures of the communities that we serve. Obviously, Porter County, we've invested heavily in. We have employees that live, reside, raise their families here in the community, and we greatly appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Welcome. I would also like to point out that, you know, when we, when we approve these new policies and everything, that the, all commission language and everything will be extracted from these documents. And I think that's, that's up, you know, to our attorney to review that. But I also noticed that that was in a lot of the correspondence that I was reading, too. And I want to make mention of that, because we talk about things, but I want people to understand that we're also following through, and we're actually doing it on the, on the, on the legal end side of it as well, too. So, it will be extinguished. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to say that we'll be as transparent as, as possible with, with the board and anybody else that, that needs to be involved with this. So.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the recommendations by GIS concerning our casualty renewal.
Second, we have a motion and a second for the renewal summary strategy presented by GIS Insurance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Look forward to working with you, gentlemen.
Likewise. Thank you.
Falling prices.
That's where we're headed.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have approval to purchase 911 radios for Beverly Shores Police Department, Town of Pines Fire Department, and Ogden Dunes Police and Fire.
Well, first, start, first, Mr. Chairman, is to thank County Attorney Scott McClure, who almost ran out of batteries, I would guess, on his calculator, trying to get us to the number that we needed to be. I think all of us knew that the, the funds where we were taking the cost of these radios out of, it initially exceeded a million dollars.
Yeah.
And here we are at the 11th hour with the last request, batch of requests, and with, with a few dollars left in, in the fund, not much. I think we've satisfied everybody's request. The first is Ogden Dunes Police Department. We are awarding, subsidizing 21,481 dollars and 57 cents to the cost of their radios. Ogden Dunes Fire Department, we are, they will receive a check for 77,359 dollars and 70 cents for the cost of their radios. The Beverly Shores Police Department will be compensated 9,073 dollars and 2 cents for the cost of their mobile units, and which come out of Leftfield, as everybody knows, that the town of, the town of, the Pines had recently dissolved their fire department. So, Wyson Township was, was covering, servicing that area. I got a call literally last week that, hey, I'm so-and-so, and we just created a, a fire department here for the Town of Pines. We're, we're contracted at the Town of Pines, but we need radios. So, we had, we had to find the, the funds for that purpose, which I believe that we have. They will be compensated 15,178 dollars and 90 cents, and that should take care of everyone, unless somebody else decides to create a fire department or a police department here in Porter County.
And you're giving out money.
Yeah. I'd also like to point out that we will not, I don't think we will be giving any checks to any municipalities. We will be, we will be writing, the checks will be written towards, to bar tronics to, for the actual equipment itself. We're not giving these entities money. We're buying this stuff directly. And it's actually much, much easier and a better way to do that per state statute. So, I'll make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval to purchase 911 radios for Beverly Shores Police Department, Town of Pines Fire Department, and Ogden Dunes Police and Fire Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the docket, RBO, Responsible Bidding Ordinance. That is something that we have been talking about and been meeting with That is something that we have been talking about and been meeting with the folks, Tom Fraley and Marcy, over the last six months. And we have reviewed the R B O, have talked to everybody who is behind us, and I think at this particular point in time, I think the county is, we've got it on our agenda, and we're ready to move forward. We have a capital improvement project here that is going to be, it's underway. We're in the planning processes now. We have a long way to go before we stick a shovel in the ground, but we're moving towards that goal. And I think with that capital improvement project of the thirty million dollar bond plus the twenty million dollar from the stormwater bond, we are flush right now to go out and do things to make the county better. And what a better time to introduce the Responsible Bitter Ordinance into what we're trying to do here. So with that, I think Attorney McClure, you have reviewed this ordinance?
I have.
And are there any?
I mean, it's basically just, we would have a Responsible Bitter Ordinance. A lot of the communities in our, in our county have this currently. Not so many people are familiar with it, but on projects, we would have requirements, just a few of them, the share out of the model, out of the model R B O. The responsible bidders on projects would have to do things like print out Indiana Secretary of State's online records of them being in good standing with the state of Indiana, provide us with, with evidence of participation in apprentices or training programs, a copy of written plan for employee drug testing, so along those lines of being able to make sure that we have responsible contractors bidding on our work, trained employees, drug-free workplaces. We don't have issues with employees being misclassified as independent contractors, people, companies, there's some provisions in there concerning federal and state tax lien, so it's just a way of making sure that the people the county is dealing with are doing their end on their side to be good employers and having the workforce needed to do the jobs that we would be bidding out. And I believe we're on the, today for first reading.
Please tell me we don't have to read all five pages into the minutes.
We do not.
Nope.
I would also. It's available if anyone wants to see it.
I would also like to point out that several months ago, we had someone from Tom's organization that came in front of us and gave us a presentation, too. I didn't, I didn't say that, but this has been presented to this board, and now we're taking action. So with that, what we're going to have to do is, because this is an ordinance, we're going to have to, we're going to have to pause our meeting here, go into a public meeting. We're going to have to ask three times for people to come and speak for, and we'll ask three times for people to come against, then we'll close the public meeting, we'll go into comment, and then we move on the vote. So with that, we're going to suspend our commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, and with that, what I would like to do at this point is, I would like to ask anybody coming forward, and if you do decide to come forward, please state your name, your address, and before you speak, and with that, we'll move right into it. So what we will do is, we'll, first call for anybody to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance. Come on up, Tom. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Just fine. My name's Tom Fraley. I've been a resident of this county now for seventy-five years. I'm the Regional Director for the State of Indiana for the Indiana-Illinois-Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. I've worked for this organization after retiring from the State Police for seventeen years. I, I've been part of the Responsible Bitter Ordinance in Northwest Indiana for the last four years. I just want to make a comment. There's about thirty-seven, thirty-six or thirty-seven public bodies that have now adopted this type of Responsible Bitter Ordinance, and it's worked out quite favorably for the, and they're, and they've kept these, some of them for as long as eight years. So with that, I just want to make that it is a popular thing. It is growing in support. We also have two or three more public bodies that, that have adopted it. The county of Stark County adopted it in March, and just recently awarded two contracts and promoted those. They bypassed the lowest bidder and gave those projects to the Responsible Bidders in that, in that bid. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I have the second call for anybody wishing to come and speak and vote. Yes, you do, Mr. Palmetier, front and center. Put the seatbelt on, too. Hi, Randy.
How you doing? Good, my name's Randy Palmetier. I'm the Business Manager for the Northwestern Indiana Building Trades Council. So on behalf of my council members, we want to thank you, the Board of Commissioners, for approving this ordinance. I know second reading is January sixteenth, I believe, so we are in support of this ordinance. You guys are ensuring that's safe. Responsible contractors are working on your buildings. So with that, thank you again.
Thank you, Randy. We have a third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Jeremy, come forward, please. Please state your name and address. We don't know who you are. Now you know what it feels like.
Welcome to the big show.
Welcome to the big show.
Jeremy, read this. Name and address, sixty-four, seventy-two Meadow Ridge Road, Portus, Indiana. Been a lifelong resident of, oh, throw the map out.
The change in has to speak.
Been a resident of Porter County my whole life, too, and I appreciate you guys' work on this. I think this is important, as we're using taxpayer dollars, that they, you know, go to Responsible Bidders that are, we know that they're trained, qualified, that we're working on public works projects, that the right people are working on these projects, that they're, again, qualified, they're drug-free, and so that we're getting the best bang for our buck. We're, you know, you guys are doing great. The council's doing great, investing taxpayer dollars back into our infrastructure, our communities, our facilities. So this is a great thing to go along with what we're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Well, we've gone through the three fours. I'll give anybody else another opportunity if they want to come and speak in favor. If not, we will now move to, we wish anybody to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come and speak against this ordinance? And with that, the public meeting is now closed. We will now open up the floor to the Board of Commissioners. Any comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, the very first time that I was, I was able to, to read what, you know, what this is all about, I think I met with Tom probably a year ago, now close to a year ago. And, I mean, it's, as we all, we all understand that we make decisions up here that, where we're using public funds, whether it's to build a bridge, build a road, build a building, and I think it's, I think it's in everybody's best interest, especially the public's, when we're choosing contractors to work on those projects, who the, who are the most responsible and responsive. And as we all know, if we've done this at, at any amount of time, it's not, it's not, it's not wise to always pick the lowest bid, for a lot of reasons, which I won't get into today, but. So I think this is something positive for county government, and I think at the end of the day, it's something positive for the taxpayers as well. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd motion to approve an ordinance to establish responsible bidding practices and submission requirements for submittal bids to perform construction work on public works projects.
We have a motion. I will second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be doing second reading, as Randy stated, on January sixteenth at ten a.m. So step one, done. Thank you. Now we're going to move into juvenile detention. Allison Cox, hi, Allison, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. This is for the two thousand eighteen Jasper County contract.
Correct. But this will have a partnership between us and Jasper County for two hundred and fifty bed days for two thousand and eighteen at a per diem of a hundred and forty dollars. That will be to thirty-five thousand dollars that will go into our general fund. They do utilize all of the bed days, so they are used. Just so you know, we will have in front of you probably next meeting, another contract for Newton County, so we're working with their commissioners now to get that, and then I will have it in front of you probably next month. Stark County, we talked with them about doing a contract, but they're, they're not going to do it this year, and that's okay. They still will pay a per diem if we hold their kids. The only difference is that with that, we, we give priority to the ones we have contracts with. So if we don't have bed days, they can't use us. So with that, I would like approval for this agreement, so we can move forward with Jasper County for next year.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. I will second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the two thousand eighteen Jasper County contract for the Juvenile Detention Center. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Yep. Michelle Clancy, our treasurer, come forward. How are you, Michelle?
Good.
Good. See, we got a public reading here, huh?
Yeah.
We do.
Yee-haw. So what do you got here?
What we're trying to establish is a processing fee for the mobile home transfers and moving permits. It would be a ten-dollar fee, so anytime someone wants to come in to do the transfer, that money would be deposited into the general fund. And basically, what it's for is just to hopefully stop the loss of the original permits, stop the changing of names, and hopefully motivate them to get to the B M V and actually apply for the title transfer without having to come back and pay another ten dollars.
So it sounds like it's been lagging quite a bit.
Yeah, the mobile home is kind of a mess.
Different world.
Yeah, so to try and get some order would be nice.
Yeah, makes sense.
Motion to approve.
Well, we got to do a public meeting here.
Yeah, it's first reading.
It's first reading. So what we'll do here, same as we did last time, I'm going to suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public meeting, hearing. First call, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? We will now move, anybody wishing, first call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? With that, we will go back, close the public hearing, open it up to the board. Any, any questions?
The only thing I would like to add is that this is not unique. Many other counties do this fee also, and that the Treasurer's Office and putting together this, this proposal, I want to thank them, because they did a lot of heavy lifting on this draft of the ordinance, and also that they did do some time and study to figure out that ten dollars would be the appropriate fee. That wasn't just plunked out of nowhere. That was after looking at what other counties do and what the process included at our level here at the county. So those things had been done and ferreted out before this was brought to the commissioners.
Thank you, Scott.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. I will second. We have a motion and a second for the first reading of an ordinance establishing processing fees for mobile home transfers and moving permits. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. We'll see you back here on the sixteenth. It'll automatically go on the agenda. I T Department, Don Wellsen, hi, Don. We have an Adams Remco copier maintenance agreement for two copiers in the print shop. Good old print shop.
Yeah, I, well, I asked six different companies to vote on this, maintenance for the two copy machines. Adams Remco came back with the ones that you have. The other five companies refused to give me a quote, because they couldn't handle, they couldn't support the seven machines that we have in the print shop, so. We want to approve an I T, Impact, X A Plus, Kramer Leonard, and Chester's.
Okay. Motion to approve I T, Adams Remco copier maintenance agreement.
Second, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the Adams Remco copier maintenance agreement for two copiers in the print shop. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Lori Daly, our favorite, two thousand eighteen Caterer co, oh, oh, sorry, sorry, I forgot the Memorial Opera House is here. Yeah, our second favorite.
No, Lori's our favorite. Here's two of them. There's two of them. I didn't commit, but I didn't commit either way.
Thanks, Jim.
So what do you got?
The catering contracts for next year is the exact same people, except we added Leroy. So we have Kelsey's Picks, Masters, Urquies, Leroy's.
Let's, let's go ahead and read, I'll read them in, I want to read them into the minutes. Suzie's Catering, Leroy's Catering, Leroy's concession contract, oh, is that same, oh, that's concession.
Yeah, it's two different contracts.
Right. Joanne Miller concession, Burkey concession, Burkey Catering, J A Burkey concession, Gunshow concession, B and J Specialties concession, Tate's Place concession, Master Caterers, Kelsey's Catering, and Pix Tavern Catering. Well, that's quite a lineup.
Yeah.
All right. And it's the same agreement throughout.
Correct.
Yeah. So I'll open up the floor.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the expo catering contract as read into the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Matt Steckly, come on down. We got N I P S C O, we have electric change release, electric rate change release. Matt, why don't you give everybody just a little bit of a quick profile as to what you ended up doing?
Sure. Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner Good, this was, I do want to state for the record that this was at your, your ship and direction, that you wanted me to look into this. So pretty much, the N I P S C O addresses rates to each facility in terms of the kilowatts used, the load on the, on the facility, and based on that specific rate is what we pay and we enter into a contract. So we took a look at some of the larger facilities, and simply by bringing in three N I P S C O consultants, we're going to be, today I'm asking that we change the rates at three facilities, the Opera House, the animal, the new animal shelter, and the jail. The Opera House and Animal Shelter, it's low-hanging fruit, maybe a couple hundred dollars a year in savings. The jail, we're looking at ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year without doing anything, simply changing this rate. We have new meters installed at the court, the Valpoe Courthouse and the admin building. We're, we want to basically ensure, we think we're going to be changing those two rates, so I may be back in January, February, but before we do all that, we want to make sure that the usage corresponds with the data. So with those two buildings possibly being changed total, I mean, the county's looking at thirty to sixty grand simply by changing numbers on, on some papers, so it's.
How, how does that work exactly?
It's a rate change, meaning that each individual building, depending on the amount that we're pulling and the amount that we're requiring on a regular basis, changes the rate itself. So they have different rate, rate classifications for residential as opposed to a commercial.
Small commercial, large commercial.
Or a good commercial.
The jail for.
They begin to change.
The jail, for instance, is a twenty-four-seven facility. The current rate that we're on now, we're paying kind of a middle-scale, medium-sized commercial fee, whereas the rate change today, we're actually going to be paying more per kilowatt. So on paper, if you look at it, it's, we're paying more, how are we saving? But over, the way the facility operates, the power it uses, the load it's under, and it being a twenty-four-seven facility, it will actually decrease, we're looking at ten to fifteen thousand in savings over the course of a whole year.
Just with the jail.
Just with the jail alone. So that's all this is today, is just rate change.
As Matt learned through this process, there's certain, it's not just, you don't get to just tell N I P S C O, I want to be this rate. You have to meet certain requirements.
Correct, and that's where, you know, this, I've, I've done energy before, quite a few years of it, but I've never got into the utility rates. I've always taken it as what we pay and what N I P S C O says is what it is, and I had a good discussion with Commissioner Good, and so we, we took a deep dive, and there's, there's money here, so. And then on a, on a separate front, also, I did a full walkthrough with Lockheed Martin. kind of a partner with NIPSCO, and we spent quite a few hours at the jail looking at our usage and lighting. So there's some discussions coming forward there. And it, as of now, the information I've received, it does fall in line with the industry standard of a year to a year and a half of your ROI. So the investment coming into the jail on the lighting side, it's a quick ROI, and from there, it's net savings year after year after year. It's all LED. So that's still real early. The walkthrough is done, but the wheels are turning.
And that was, it's sort of a two-pronged approach. First, it was to make sure we're on the right programs.
Yes.
And now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start moving towards some of our larger buildings. Some of the buildings we're gonna be renovating in the capital improvement plan. We're also gonna be looking at ways for different LED lighting and other things. So we're going to really take an energy approach, management approach, to these new buildings that we're gonna fix up. Plus, we're gonna be studying some of our bigger buildings that are 24/7. But we think that, you know, on that second part of that prong, there's gonna have to be an investment made by the county to get the payback. And that's always a tough sell in government, but we're gonna go through that because remember, those jail lights, they burn 24/7, 365, and there's some big areas that need to be lit. So we think that there's a pathway here to become more efficient, and Matt is taking that on. It's very common, me being in the hotel business, obviously, we look at our utilities quite regularly, every 28 days. It's not uncommon for rate programs to change in billing. So you're always having to look at it, you're always having to double check it, you're always having to verify it because they can have equipment issues, they can have IT issues, that somehow it kicks your rate out or whatever. But it's something that we're starting to look at a little bit closer here than what we have in the past to make sure that we're always on the right rate program and that we're doing the right things. And so we started with the rate program first. Matt caught these in his meetings, and now we just need to come back and request them. I'd also like to say that a certain rate program, like in a hotel, is a 325 gas and an 823 electric. These rate programs have to be allocated in a certain way because the utilities companies have these rate programs approved by the utility regulations. So they cannot deviate from these programs and these classifications of a building. So that's how you get these rate classifications. Now, we just went back and made sure that our buildings fit within that.
And post the capital, once, down the road, once these buildings are renovated, well, I'll be looking at all of them again. I know we're talking about making some of these facilities larger, so there's gonna be, we're gonna have to do that again. And then to touch base on the ROI, that I mentioned the industry standard is one year to a year and a half on your return on investment. So yeah, the county may have to dish out some money upfront, but if you're looking at seven to 10 years on these fixtures, and we made our money back in one year simply for the investment, you're looking at net eight, nine years of savings. So it's, you are investing, but it's worth it.
By the way, this was never done before, so.
No, no.
Unfortunately.
So.
It's a big, if you really take a look at what this county is spending in utility costs, it's a big number. And it's a number that needs to be managed. And that's basically what we're up here doing today.
Yeah, we have 18 properties. We're talking about a lot of money paid to, you know, for electric and gas throughout the year.
So now, as our Buildings Facilities Department has just moved from fixing stuff and taking care of all of our deferred maintenance, we're now starting to turn the ship a little bit, and we're starting to take a look at on reoccurring things and looking out into the future as to what we can do to continue to drive these numbers down. So our Buildings Facilities Department is now morphing into more of an overall assessment of our facilities. So we're growing up, we're getting better, we're moving in the right direction, and it's all good stuff. So thank you, Matt. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it.
Thanks. We need to take action on this, I believe, so I will open up the floor.
Motion to approve the NIPSCO electric rate change.
I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second to approve the NIPSCO electric rate changes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Matt. Highway Department, Andy McKay. Hi, Andy. Got through the first winner.
Oh, yeah. First thing we had, four guys. Smells of four-letter words. First thing I had was a contract agreement with Indot for the 264 West Road. As you guys know, they used it for a bypass, an unofficial bypass, and did a lot of damage. So we asked for some damages, and this is what it's for.
How much did you get?
Thank you for asking.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a contract for damages to 264 West from Indot. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Now we have award bids for 2018 supplies. We opened all those at the last meeting. You've had time to go through all those, it's quite a bit.
Yep.
And you know what I'll do, Andy, is I'm just, since we're gonna be accepting all of them, why don't I just read through them real quick, and then we'll make the motion and get out of here?
The only one I, we don't do all of them on is the diesel fuel. We pick the lowest one with the lowest margin.
So we'll, okay, so we'll do all of them except diesel fuel, and then we'll come back and do diesel fuel separately. So what we'll do is we'll be accepting, I'll make a motion to accept the award bids for 2018 supplies for limestone, slag, pavement striping, equipment rental, signs and posts, calcium chloride, culverts and guardrails.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Now we move to diesel fuel, and Matt has recommended accepting Triple J Mar petroleum with the lowest cost margin.
Correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Next.
Salt domes.
Salt domes. We, through the, Andy, the Highway Department and Buildings Facilities, we, the county has three salt domes, one in each of our county garages. The salt dome roofs in Hebron and Chesterton are in bad shape. Valparaiso is in, is bad shape, and we do have some repairs there that we're gonna look at. But I think, Andy, these, we have two bidders. One is Corellis Roofing, the other is Tri-County Roofing. If you take, if you take Hebron and Chesterton, combine them together, Corellis is at $52,384. Tri-County is at $55,114. So the responsible and low bidder would be Corellis Roofing on Hebron and Chesterton. And I will make the motion for Corellis Roofing on the Hebron and Chesterton salt dome replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Then we go to Valpoe Repairs, and I think Corellis was at $3,500, and Tri-County was at $18,562. I will make a motion for the Tri-County roof repaired for $18,562.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Tri-County Roofing to do repairs at the Valparaiso Garage Salt Dome. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. And I would also like to mention, again, because of our Buildings Facility Department and the way that we budgeted our monies for this year, and we worked through all of our maintenance items and everything else, at the end, usually about November, we meet at the first of the year with Matt and his group. This year, he had some monies available at the end of the year, and that was when we decided as the Board of Commissioners, here's a perfect opportunity to take care of a couple items that really need to be fixed. And so that's where these monies are coming from. They're part of that Buildings Facilities Maintenance Budget, and we're now using it for capital improvements and other things. So once again, it's, our department is moving, we're doing things efficiently, getting more done. And here, at the end of the year, we had some extra funds that we were able to go knock out a prop project that needed to be done. So it's all good stuff.
They were in bad shape, yep.
Yep, so, and I know Andy was concerned because every time these salt domes, they get water in there, the salt melts. And we're paying a lot for salt. So we need to make sure that we protect that salt the best we can. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Just wanted to let everybody know how that all came about. Next, we go to Development Stormwater Management. Bob Thompson, Director. First on the list for Bob is memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Highway Department and Porter County Stormwater Department. Bob, why don't you sort of give everybody a little bit of an update as to why we're putting this MOE together between two different departments?
This particular case came about because we agreed that we were going to purchase a lowboy trailer for the Highway Department on this. We do use the Highway Department, their equipment, and also their labor on cases. So it's more or less coming up in agreement. We'll purchase the lowboy trailer and everything, they'll have it stationed down there and everything. But it's agreed upon that there is gonna be cooperative use of this particular trailer and the equipment that's hauled out for our jobs, also the Highway Department jobs.
So we're basically formalizing our relationship between two departments.
Correct.
Awesome. Any questions, Jim? I'll make a motion. We have a motion and a second for a memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Highway Department and Porter County Stormwater Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. Cell phone policy for Building Planning and Zoning Fund.
Okay, this, y'all turned this earlier with the Stormwater Management Board again, but this is a different fund now. This is the Plan, Building Planning and Zoning Fund. And again, I'll just repeat that, it is up to the Director's determination whether or not an employee will have the service of a phone. And there's two choices on this. Number one is we will purchase the phone and also pay for that, but there is the understanding, and it's within this memorandum, that it can only be strictly used for work on this. There is a case, we understand, in emergencies or anything like that, that they are gonna have to do that. But there are no personal apps. It's strictly for work. The other choice, too, is to use the personal phone on this, which we will reimburse up to a $60 monthly fee on this. But they must have it available for staff within the office for contacting, also the Commissioners and Council upon request.
Any questions to the Board? I'll make the motion for the cell phone office policy for Building Planning and Zoning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the new cell phone policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. We have a rezone. Go ahead, Bob.
This is Plan Commission Resolution 17-08. Petitioner Gary and Laura Nelson. This was a mistake done with the actual rezoning of the map, and we are back requesting it. Even though we put the petitioner as Gary and Laura Nelson, it's really the Plan Commission correcting a mistake on the zoning map. We're changing the zoning for this particular parcel from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to MP Manufactured Home District on this. It was forwarded up to the Commissioners with a favorable recommendation by 8-0 vote by the Plan Commission at their last meeting. To explain this, this is the residential manufactured home park that's up there on the south side of US 6 across from the, from the Porter Hospital. And this particular case, we researched it. There are four residential mobile homes on the parcel now, and it was part of a special exception that was approved by the BZA. Needs to take back from in the area of 69 to 71. So it was totally missed by our office. We just looked at the aerials and did the, and I can't remember the name of it, Liberty Farms Mobile Home Park. We did not include this parcel, even though they were approved by the BZA to hold such use on it.
Okay. So with that, since it's a rezone, we'll have to do a public hearing. So we're gonna recess the Council Commissioners' meeting and open it up for a public meeting for a rezone for R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to MP Manufactured Home Park District. The petitioner is Gary and Laura Nelson. What we will do is we will have first calling, anybody wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? We'll now move to anybody wishing to come and speak against this ordinance? Anybody wishing to come and speak against this ordinance, second call? Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? And with that, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to the Commissioners, and open the floor. Any comments, Jim?
Motion to rezone R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District MP Manufactured Home Park District. First reading, motion to approve.
We have, I'll second. So we have a motion and a second for a rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposing sign. Motion carries. We'll do the second reading on January 16th. Now we're moving to Highway Engineering. Bob Thompson, again, this is opening a bid for Bridge 1008. That's bridge reconstruction for Clem Road over Willow Creek.
Yes, this is rehabilitation of Bridge number 1008. It's Clem Road over Willow Creek. It's in the city of Portage, Porter County. One of the bridges, one of the 128 bridges that we look over and manage. And that, this is going to be a bridge deck replacement on this. It was publicly noticed, and it was also placed up on, to our consultants, what they call document page up there, and notified of bidders to, of the interested bidders on this.
What is this to go, Bob?
What we're looking at right now is we would like to have the bids open, name them off, and then we would probably take this under advisement and come back to you at your first meeting in January 16th to actually award this. We would want to make sure that they're, all of the bids are responsible on this. So we will be back to give you an idea of the schedule on this. Once we award it, then on the contract within the documents, I believe it is a May 1 completion date that they have. So we're expecting the demolition of the bridge and also the, the deck, I should say, to start up probably into February, beginning of March.
Okay, thank you. We can open. Okay, first bid proposal. Ellis Construction Company, out of Gary. The first bid. Second bid is from LaPorte Construction, out of LaPorte, Indiana. Oh, wait. Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be. Third bid is for Reese Riley. This is Ellis Construction out of Munster, Indiana. And this is the JCI Bridge Group out of LaPorte, Indiana. And this is Gary Up Construction. We know them, they're out of Gary, too. So what you'll do is you'll take them under advisement, and you'll.
Review them for.
Review them, and then they'll be on the agenda with a recommendation for the January 16th meeting.
Okay, you don't necessarily need us to read off the numbers.
No.
But they're available for.
Available on our office.
Yes, yep. There they are, in their original form.
Okay, now we'll move to Redevelopment Commission, Bob Thompson. We got some heavy lifting here on a project that we're working on. So, with that, we'll turn it over to you, Bob.
The Redevelopment Commission proposed a declaratory resolution and also an economic development plan. And the parcel that they're looking at is on the south side of 700 North, south of the South Haven Residential Development, and next to the Portage Township Parks. This is the old sheriff's substation that was up there. It's own, Commissioner's own property. It's about six tenths to seven tenths of an acre on that. What we're proposing to do is the demolition of the existing residential structure that sounded, it's been a number of uses up there, and propose to build a new county facility on that, which would have a small office, or I should say, meeting room on that with some garage facilities on it. A little allow for warming station for the South Haven crews that work for the Porter County Highway Department, and also a staging ground for the work that's going to be coming up at the Twin Creeks Conservancy District. The Redevelopment Commission did approve the draft declaratory resolution and also the economic development plan. This was forwarded up to the Plan Commission, and at a public hearing, the Plan Commission then approved an order forwarding this up to the Commissioners. This order basically reviewed the economic development plan and said it is in conformity with the Porter County Comprehensive Plan or the Porter County Land Use and Fill for Plan. So, we are now before you to request a resolution, be approved, adopting this plan, and then it gets forwarded up to the Redevelopment Commission, which will be holding a meeting next week, if approved, to have a formal public hearing on the declaratory resolution and the economic plan.
Do we have to take action on number one, or is it?
We can do all of them at the same time. We're approving all of it. And we're approving it all to go to the RDC for the published meeting.
So moved. So, we got to open up a public hearing, right? Is it a resolution or not?
Nope.
Nope. So, we can. So, what we will do is we will do all five of these under one.
Yep.
So, we have a motion on the floor. I will second for the Porter County Plan Commission, Redevelopment for the declaratory resolution, Number 2017-02. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposing sign. Motion carries.
And Bob, that will be heard at the RDC meeting on December 18th?
December 18th, 5 o'clock here in East Chambers.
Correct.
And you know, everybody understands that South Haven is far and away our largest population in the unincorporated area. And why this is significant here, what we're doing here today, is that this decision today will kickstart a project where it actually gives county government presence in that community. And that, you'll have this building there, which the highway will be working out of. It will be, also be a staging area. And what, by the way, why that's significant? Instead of the trucks coming out of Valpo in a snowstorm, they're going to be coming out of there. A staging area for, you know, nearly, what, Jeff, $15 million worth of stormwater work to be started later this month or next year, early next year. And I would also state that, you know, someplace, a warming area, you know, for, you know, somebody that is out plowing snow, or trucks plowing snow, a place that they can come in there, warm up, get back out and do it, you know, keep on going. They don't have that luxury right now. And there's a, I don't know how many miles a county road are in the communities of.
How many?
Yeah, there you go. And a significant amount of those miles are in South Haven and Salt Creek Commons, so. No, I agree, Jim. This is an area that, this is the largest, South Haven is the largest unincorporated urban area in the state of Indiana. That in itself is very interesting. But if you know much about South Haven, you've been out there, there's a lot of street parking because the way the subdivision was developed. So, snow plowing becomes more like hand-to-hand combat out there when you are plowing. And so, it just seems to take longer out there. There's more to work around. There's a lot more variables, and we felt with all the work that we're doing, and this being such a large, unincorporated area, the largest in the state, we just felt that the Board of Commissioners feel that the Porter County Government needs to have more of a representation in that community, and this will do that. So, we dusted off the Redevelopment Commission that has sort of been dormant here the last several years, has been more used for grant monies and other things, and we're giving that a new mission and a new task. And now, we're moving forward on this project. This will be the first project of the RDC, and our Board is energized and moving forward. And we actually have the funds in our account to be able to do this. So, once we get all the formalized stuff done for the RDC, the Board is working on putting their plans together and have hired a consultant. And so, I think this is the beginning of other things you'll be seeing coming out of this Redevelopment Commission. I'd like to also state that a Redevelopment Commission in a county is much different than a city for many different reasons. And so, it becomes a little bit more difficult for the county because we don't have utilities, we don't have other things involved. But we still think that this commission can do things for the county and can create another pathway to get some of the smaller projects done. So, this is the beginning of that. So, I hope I.
Especially in a community like South Haven, so unique. I mean, it's nearly the size of the town of Chesterton. And this Board of Commissioners, I think, would all agree that there needs to be more of a presence of county government there to help manage things. And that's one of the goals we're trying to meet here.
Yep. So, good. So, we got all those done. Last, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
We got one more meeting, RDC, the end of the year. So, last, we have Valparaiso YMCA, Mike Jones, Director, Race Director. I was wondering if that was you, Mike, back there?
Well, I don't want to be accused of a first name. I'm actually made not only a.
Hello.
I'm a race director.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Again, this is a request for the Valparaiso YMCA to host the 23rd Annual Ringing in the Spring 5K/10K Road Race to be held on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. A map of the course has been included, which will start and finish on Cumberland Drive by the YMCA Pavilion. I know we've done this in the past, so. Would you like to add anything to that, or?
Those are the basics. I mean, the map kind of lays out the road closures. It's about 90 minutes of road closure time. We use a county sheriff at the Burlington Beach intersection with Valparaiso, and a city police officer at the Bullseye and Valparaiso intersection.
I'm sure Commissioner Good has already signed himself up for that.
Yeah, I'm a big 5K'er.
5K and 10K.
Yeah, I'll do both.
I'll do both, and he does both.
That's a safe bet. I'll make the motion. We have a second. We have a motion and a second for the approval for the Valparaiso family YMCA for their annual Ringing in Spring Road Race. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck on your event.
Thank you.
And with that, we come to the end of our meeting. With that, I would like to ask anybody wishing to address this board, please come forward. With that, this Board stands in recess.